I'll call the regular meeting of the Menifee City Council to order. Madam Clerk, would you take a roll, please?
Yes, sir. Councilmember August. Councilmember Furman.
Here.
Councilmember Edgerton.
Here.
Councilmember Denver.
Here.
And Mayor Mann.
Here. And who do we have for invocation or words of inspiration?
Mr. Pastor Tony Truax with Hope Christian Church.
Pastor.
Almighty God, we praise you and thank you for your grace, for your mercy, and for granting us this new year, 2013. Lord, you have told us that in your word you will instruct us and teach us, and that you would give us counsel and keep your eyes upon us. As we come together this evening, we ask for your holy and sovereign guidance to be upon our mayor, upon our city council, our citizens, and our civic leaders as they dialogue. We ask for your divine wisdom to grant them and lead them as they consider all matters this evening and throughout the year ahead as you tarry. Lord, we ask that you would keep us and make us a compassionate and responsive city that extends the hand of fellowship one to another in faith, hope, and love. We ask Almighty God for your holy hands to guard and protect our school campuses, our children, our teachers, and their families. We pray that you would keep watch over our law enforcement, our first responders, our hospitals, our churches, our convalescent homes, and we pray for safety in our neighborhoods, that our businesses also would prosper and grow. We pray, Lord, that our citizens would be united with a shared goodwill and benevolence for the poor, the needy, the downhearted, and troubled. For we know, Lord, that he who has pity on the poor lends to the Lord, and the Lord will repay us. Lord, I ask for your grace in making Menifee a city that has leaders and citizens that willingly join together in community, seeking good favor, trying to solve the impossible, accomplishing the improbable, and succeeding in being most charitable. And may we do this, oh Lord, to your glory. And we ask all these things in your blessed and almighty name, God. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Councilmember August, would you please lead us in the pledge?
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to ourself. Ready, begin.
Our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember August. Madam Clerk, do we have any presentations or proclamations this evening?
No, Your Honor.
Then I would entertain -- before I move on to 6.1 and 6.2, City Attorney, on Agenda Item 6.1, since Councilmember August and I were only present at half the meeting, should we be abstaining from voting on those minutes?
Yes.
You should abstain to the extent that you were not present.
Yes.
All right, very well. So I would ask that Councilmember August join me in abstaining from 6.1, and I'll handle gavel over to -- do I need to hand the gavel over to the deputy mayor for this?
No, actually, you can just state that you are recusing yourself on that and then take a motion.
All right, thank you very much. I would entertain a motion on 6.1.
So moved.
And roll call vote because of the abstentions, please.
Councilmember August, I'll note your abstention. Councilmember Furman.
Hi.
Councilmember Edgerton and Councilmember Denver.
Aye.
And Mayor Mann, I'll note your abstention.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you.
And Agenda Item 6.2, meetings of the special meeting of December 15th, I believe it was, not December 12th.
No.
Is that correct?
No, it was the 12th. It was 12, 12, 12.
It was the 12th. All right, thank you. May I have a motion, please?
Hello, sir.
Motion by Councilmember Denver and seconded by -- excuse me, motion by Councilmember Furman and seconded by Councilmember Denver. All in favor?
Aye.
Agenda Item 7, do we have any modifications to the agenda? Councilmember Furman.
Yes, I do. I -- before I make my modifications, I want to voice my concerns, okay? The Audi Murphy map that was put on the agenda on a special meeting was put on in short time, and public did not have enough sufficient time to comment. The EIR that I reviewed, my findings are that the Phase 1 environmental site assessment relied on personal interviews with Mr. Adolfo Perez and statements from local farmers in the area. RM Environmental concluded, and it is their opinion, that any significant hazardous material existing on or migrating into the site are from off-site sources. The off-site sources are what we have to deal with. For years, sludge has been used as manure fertilizer in fields upstream in all directions, Winchester, Hammont, Menifee, Paloma Valley, all tributaries into Salt Creek. There have been years of flooding in Salt Creek. There's a settling area of 900 feet wide and several hundred feet long for this hazardous material to accumulate from the upstream fields. There's also been some problems with some of the houses along La Ladera, which borders the Salt Creek Channel. Here is a line from the ER, the EIR, August 17th. "The field reconnaissance included traversing the property in order to observe surface soil conditions." That is not much of an inspection or a testing procedure. My question is, since there has been no subsurface testing, is this land safe around Salt Creek and suitable for residential use without proper testing? So, as I'm looking out for the health and welfare of the citizens of Menifee, I'm looking for some -- something positive to come out of the sludge forum that we are going to have in February. So, on the advice of a legal counsel, I am withdrawing my request for reconsideration of 31393 and removing it from the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Furman. Deputy Mayor Edgerton.
Well, I was -- I was very pleased to hear Councilman Furman's remarks, because everybody on this council is very concerned about the health and welfare of everybody in this city. And, Tom, I'm glad to see you on board. I'm looking over here at one of the former times when I was battling to put -- make an agenda item about sludge, and got it on there, then got the staff to back me, and I couldn't get the votes to make it a little tougher, so we would do more testing to make sure that we didn't have sludge on the property. Doggone it, Tom, you didn't vote with me then. But you're with us tonight, and I'm glad. I'm glad to have you with us. And I don't want to go off on something about the mayor, he speaks for himself, but I really feel it should be said. This mayor, Mayor Mann, has talked to a number of us, he's put it in writing. He said, "I got a concern about biosolids, I got a concern about sludge." It's been an issue with him, it was an issue with me in the campaign and on this last election campaign. So we're all on the same page here. The idea that any of us would be anything but very concerned about the health and welfare of everybody in this city, of course, would be inappropriate. And, Tom, I know you agree with that. One other thing, I had somebody say to a number of people that, gosh, Wally put a lot of his sludge into Menifee, which I thought, wow, that's a pretty powerful thing to do, because I sat on the Los Angeles County Sanitation District, and -- but there's a bunch of mayors on there, from Los Angeles to Santa Monica, about 50 of them. So, Mayor, at some other time, what I would like to do, because you've pushed transparency, and I'm glad you do, just have the -- have a letter from you and the city and the council to the Los Angeles County Sanitation District. And so, we want all the records of anything and everything you have ever put in southwest Riverside County, and particularly in Menifee. We want to make a note that one of our deputy mayor was on that board, and we want that letter, when that information's sent back to the city of Menifee, we want the staff to be available, to know what's in it. We want it to be public information, we want the press to be able to get a hold of it, so that instead of these rumors, we've got the facts, and we'll find out that we've got a city that will work together, and we are concerned about sludge. Thank you, Mayor, for all that time.
All right, thank you, Deputy Mayor. With the consent of the council, we would ask staff to prepare that letter for us in the future and make that request to that agency, please.
So noted.
Moving on, continue on with Agenda Item 7. Thank you, Councilmember Furman, for making your statement and pulling that item. I would also remove Agenda Item 12.5 this evening, and we will hear that on another future meeting to be determined. And though, as a result, I would like to move Agenda Item 12.4 up in the discussion section to be heard before Agenda Item 12.3, just for flow of hearing those items.
Okay.
And hearing -- are there any objections to this? Hearing none?
None.
Moving on to public comment. Madam Clerk, we would, because we removed 9.1, if there are speakers on 9.1, if they would like to speak on this item during public comment, we'll take it, or if they would like to reserve it until it comes back on a future date, I believe the city manager has a report later on this evening that will deal with that, so we will take public comment at this time.
Okay. So, I will call first those who indicated an interest in speaking just under public comments, and then offer any of you, as per the mayor's instruction, if you put down 9.1, you may at this time then speak about it, or you can wait, your choice. So the first public commenter is Dean Wetter.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council. My name is Dean Wetter. I'm general manager for Valleywide Recreation and Park District.
Sorry.
My purpose tonight is just to simply introduce myself, introduce some of our programs that you -- get that away a little bit, that you may or may not be aware of as we service your city on the east side of the freeway. Valleywide has been around, this is our 41st year of serving the communities. We have in total almost 80 parks, nine community centers, and we like to believe that we do the best job of living up to creating community, which is our motto. In 1989, Valleywide Recreation and Park District came to Menifee with opening of La Paloma Park and Wheatfield Park. Now, in 2013, Valleywide provides 17 parks with nearly 100 acres of active open space, three community centers, and streetscape maintenance in various areas of Menifee. It's difficult to know how many people visit Valleywide, the parks in the city of Menifee every day, but we know that about 20% of the youth in the city participate, play sports in Valleywide's parks and recreation facilities. Our senior softball league is about 300 strong, and over 700 people attend our weekly instructional classes at our facilities. We at Valleywide Recreation and Park District are proud of our partnership with the city of Menifee, and we're excited for our continued growth together. Of course, we look forward to defending our title against the city of Menifee in the second annual Soapbox Derby.
Oh, no chance.
Rob, that was for you. But more importantly, I think that having the script is important. I wanted to meet a couple of -- make sure I mentioned a couple of items to you, but in all sincerity, want to appreciate the togetherness that we've worked together on, as well as the staff, the great staff that we have within the parks, the volunteers from the community, and Rob and your staff working together with us on the many, many programs. And that's all I really wanted to say, but we appreciate the continued relationship, and we want to do whatever we can to create community right here in the city of Menifee. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Wetter. Did you have some additional comments?
I do have, this is just some samplings of our parks. I do want to distribute these, and I'll do that through the city clerk, so it's a matter of public record.
Thank you very much, and I'm sure that at some point in the future, as we explore service providing in the city with respect to parks and rec, that you'll be working with our city manager on a project in the future.
My pleasure.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Beth Green. Beth Green, Sun City. Honorable Mayor, Council, residents. I want to applaud you on the tree lighting ceremony. I think it was December 8th. First, hats off to Tom Furman, who drove his tractor and wagon to drive residents between the Yellow Basket parking lot and City Hall. When we got here, we were welcomed outside with hot drinks and cookies, served by the employees with smiling faces. Plus, the children had a special treat of a pile of snow to play in and make snowballs. My four-year-old grandson thought he died and went to North Pole. When my grandson is happy, I'm happy. So, keep up the good work this year, and thank you, and may we all have a happy New Year.
Thank you, Beth, and kudos to staff for preparing that event in the city this year. Well done. Next speaker, please.
Grant Yoderz.
Good evening, City Council. Grant Yoderz, Community of Sun City. I'd like to make a couple of comments tonight about city finances. With the departure of three of our top staff members, I do have one concern, is there any correlation with their exodus and the financial posture of the city? I say this referring back to the George Winch and Gary Thompson era, when their exit was necessitated due to financial improprieties, and thanks to the finance committee oversight, the problem was identified. Which brings the question, why do we not now have a finance committee, and is it possible that one can be put back in place? The other issue that I addressed last October was a reserve fund, and now it had gone from 32% in 2010 and dropped to about 26% in 2012. But a previous city manager was quick to rebut my figure, stating that the reserve fund was at 46%. 46% is $10,960,000 and change. The difference of 20% is called an unassigned fund balance, which is identified as being residual positive new resources. I have a problem with the numbers, and my comment is, if you can't wrap your fingers around the money, it can't be in reserve. And finally, as we begin a new era with a fresh council, it is my opinion that we should have a thorough and complete audit, so that the council has a complete picture of the city's financial posture. Granted, it will cost a few bucks, but I think that the expenditure is warranted. My next comment is in regards to 9.1, which I'll discuss now, and I think it would be appropriate that the council consider bringing back the sludge ordinance for discussion and change the wording from requesting that the developer do a sludge test, which they can decline, and change the wording to requiring that they do a sludge test. This would eliminate the continuous parade of speakers regarding the sludge issue in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yoderz. Madam Clerk, next speaker.
Katie, sorry. Katie Munir.
Good evening, and Happy New Year to everybody. I'm kind of talking off the cuff, because I didn't really prepare anything tonight, but I did want to make a comment. At Quail Valley Elementary, there was an event, Santa's Workshop. A couple of our council members took part. It was nice to see them there and all the families, and at first, I heard there were 980 families that were going to be provided with gifts for children. I don't know what the final count was, I'm sure it was every bit of that. It was a wonderful day, lots of happy kids, lots of grateful parents. There wasn't bickering like I've seen at some other events. Everybody was cheerful, had a Merry Christmas and a smile. It was a wonderful event. Captain Leonard Grill from the fire department should be commended for his work with that event as well. And I guess it's Menifee Lakes Women's Club that gets donations all through the years. Many, many generous people. There were more things, it was overwhelming, the gifts that were there for kids and parents and everybody. It was just a great day. I was glad to be a part of that. Secondly, I want to commend Grant Yoderz for his speech, too. We do need to have a look at this issue with the sludge. I'm not quite sure why there was a special meeting and why Audi Murphy Ranch was approved, when part of the land that's there on that site was dredging from Canyon Lake. And we know how bad Canyon Lake is, because Salt Creek runs into that. There are homes off of La Ladera, people have walked away from, they can't live in them, due to the health issues. And if everybody's been following the paper, Wildomar is going through some problems of their own with contaminated soil, possibly, and whatever's been dumped on their sites. Lot of health issues. I think we need to take it seriously. I'm looking forward to having a forum. I think you guys need to step up and do the right thing and see what goes on with people and the severity of the illnesses in the town. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Munir. Next speaker.
Gary Grant.
Well, good evening, members of the Menifee Council, and a Happy New Year to all of you. My concerns are for information based with regard to recreation. The Valleywide District is a district that was created by the county, and Proposition 218 was created that all taxation requirements need to be voted upon. There is such a thing as Quimby Act law, and I just want to bring your attention to the Quimby Act law, that the reference to recreation is for everybody. Valleywide has just recently received six parks from RDA to Menifee, from Menifee, add to maintain. It takes approximately $100,000 to maintain one park. I learned all this because I followed the Ortega Trails Park and Recreation process. And it appears to me that people that are buying houses have to meet a commitment, 1,000 residents have to meet the commitment of parks and recreation within that Tracks Home District. I don't know if it's still in existence, but the point is that this was a creation of obligation to development. And now, Valleywide is taking over this position, and there is no vote for the finances, there is no consideration of the costs, and nobody pays attention to it. And if there is attention for people over 60, or 50, or whatever, that want to go as a recreation, where are the items of issue? And these are my concerns, because why pay taxes for things you don't know you're accepting? And this should be an item that you are very well aware of. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. I know that, if you recall, I'm not going to address the speaker, Ms. City Attorney. I just want to -- the city manager is going to be bringing back in the coming months an agenda item to discuss how we're going to administer and manage our parks and rec services in the future, so I'll defer any further comment until that meeting happens, Mr. City Manager. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Just to verify, Mr. Matelko, do you want to speak now about 9.1?
Yes, please.
All ready?
Thank you. Hi, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I just had a -- I'm speaking as a private citizen right now. Concerning the Audi Murphy, I just have a question on how is the Audi Murphy Master Plank Community CSA 145 affected by the EDA? And with that said, how is the decision-making process affected because it is an EDA project? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Matelko. We'll be referring that to the city manager and staff. Thank you.
And Dennis Tuffin, did you wish to speak about 9.1 at this time?
Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I just wanted to endorse the comments made by Mr. Furman and those people like Mrs. Munir and Mr. Matelko, who are concerned generally about the issue of sludge and who are advocating increased scrutiny and increased awareness. So, thank you. I realize this is my first opportunity, but I'm looking forward to hearing good things about this.
Thank you, Mr. Tuffin. Madam Clerk, next speaker.
Those are all the speakers, Your Honor, under public comments and those on 9.1.
Thank you very much. That brings us to councilmember updates and comments. Councilmember Furman, you're up first.
I just want to address the, excuse me, the wonderful time that Mr. Denver and I had playing Santa Claus over at Quail Valley. The report is, there was almost 400 family photographs taken over a five-hour period. So that's like 80 an hour that the staff and people that were helping position the kids and take their pictures with Santa Claus. John did the morning shift, and I did the afternoon shift, and we loved it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Furman. Well done. Councilmember August.
Can you hear me okay? I thought what I'd do is take a moment here to update you on what it feels like, what my experience has been in the first month of my job. It's been an experience, or I can tell you there's going to be a lot to learn. But anyway, I've -- I have had an opportunity to attend two meetings. I did a -- Mr. Furman asked me to attend a Student of the Month Luncheon over in Paris, and that was very educated. He told -- I said, "What do I have to do, Tom?" He asked me the day before, and he said, "You don't have to do anything, just go have a salad." So when I got there, they said, "No, you have to speak for the city." So, we had to get up there and wag it a little bit, but I made a comment about Tom, so he'll hear about that. Also, I had the opportunity on the 22nd to attend SCCA partnership dinner at SCCA. Mr. Denver was there, and Mr. Furman and myself were there. And I want to compliment the people that put that together, and I see a few of them sitting in the audience right now, Ms. Elright and Jack Corlett's there, Carol Sullivan, and I don't know if anybody else was there. But they did a wonderful job in creating the season spirit. And what I really liked, and the fact that it was a partnership with the city, I did see other people in attendance there from other homeowners' associations, and so on and so forth. Other than that, I've been coming down from day to day, bugging everybody in the city, following around, following some of the requests I've gotten from people out in the community, seeing how they navigate through the office, so I get a better understanding of how the city works. And, let's see, that's about it for the month. It's -- there's a lot to learn, it's going to take a lot of time, and I am going to have to be kind of nosy, and I'm going to have to bug the people at City until I get comfortable with what my job's supposed to be. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember August. Madam Clerk, you have your button on? Do you need --
I do. I'm looking for forgiveness. I failed to notice that Red Sullivan asked to speak. Would it be okay if we call her up for a public comment?
Absolutely. Go ahead, and Ms. Sullivan, come to the podium, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council and staff. I originally was going to speak on 9.1, because I'm very concerned about the sludge issue. I was concerned that you had a special meeting on December 12th, and it was only on a consent calendar, not an agenda item, and it was not open to public comments. Therefore, it made it more difficult for those of us in the community who don't always look at the agendas to come forward and speak. those of us in the community who don't always look at the agendas to come forward and speak. I know what the vote was. It was three to zero with August abstaining and Councilman Furman recusing himself. It's my understanding that the decision was based on a 15-year-old ERI, I mean E-I-R, not more, not the more recent reports of '98 and 2001, which I've actually reviewed. It's also my understanding that the council was not provided these additional reports to review by city staff. Question, how can the council make a decision based on an E-I-R over 15 years old? Over the last two decades and perhaps longer, sludge and potentially dangerous toxins have either been staged or dumped on the Audi Murphy property. Salt Creek, which runs from the southeast section of Menefee to Canyon Lake, flows right through it and for years has brought the off flow from the farms. There has been stands of water on the land, which I have seen during the heavy rains. Even the materials from dredging of Canyon Lake in 2004 to 2006 were staged, and this was potentially contaminated with various biosolids. Sludge and potentially toxins or bio waste can cause serious illnesses, upper respiratory illnesses, kidney disease, lung disease, and even cancer. We have residents in Menefee with these types of illnesses. I don't have any documentation regarding if these are due to contamination, but it is suspect enough to do my research. Tom was going to make a change in his, he was going to request a change in his vote. He withdrew from that. I was going to, I was going to support him in that. Now, I'm requesting you not to go further without, not to go further without reviewing the most recent EIRs, meeting the conditions that are required, requiring, not requesting more soil testing and ensuring that there are not any potentially dangerous toxins to the health and welfare of potential buyers. In closing, I strongly request that the council does its diligence and researches the information to ensure that all conditions are met, and they review the soil testing and require more thorough testing when needed. Each member of the city council took an oath to protect and defend the citizens of Menefee. We, the citizens of Menefee, will hold each of you accountable to your oath. Now, it's up to you, the council, to make the right choice and ensure that we, the citizens of Menefee, have a safe, healthy, and secure environment for ourselves and our families. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Back to council member updates and comments. Deputy Mayor Edgerton.
Clarification, Ms. Pigs. If I want to have a letter sent by the mayor and the council to the Los Angeles County Sanitation District regarding everything that happened between '75 and '92, I don't think we have to agendize that. We're just asking for a request. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
You're really just giving direction to staff on an issue that came up.
Okay. And then I just wanted to add one other point. Councilman August was mentioning about his, his first month as a councilman, by the way. I thought he's done a great job, but that's for you to decide. But I do know that in his last campaign, when I went door to door, I am telling you, I heard from a number of people, "You guys have been bickering, and we don't like it." And they told us loud and clear. So, all I can say is, this council so far in this month since Mr. August has been on and our new mayor, and it's come together, it has been, at least from my perspective, it has been cooperative. It has been a delight. It's been a pleasure to work with. I know John Denver announced something at, I know an event that my wife was at. He's holding something to have introduce people to the new mayor. And I'm going to be there, John, at your house again. I'm delighted to be so. So, I just want to, I just want to point that out. I know a lot of you are nervous when you watch our Congress. This will be an example up here of how Congress should act. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Edgerton. Councilmember Denver?
I, sorry. I would like to invite everyone to our house. It's, it'll be on the internet, I suspect. I hope it'll be on the city internet. If not, get ahold of me. My name's, my number's in the phone book. January 11th, 5:30 to 7:30, we will be introducing the new mayor, new council. I've been Melissa Melendez and several people from, just elected from school districts will be there. It'll be quite an event, so you're all welcome to come.
Thank you, Councilmember Denver. I'm looking forward to that to myself. Brings me to my portion of the comments. A quick comment about the biosolid issue. The city manager's going to report out that this at the end of this agenda. There, there's not one person up here on this dais that doesn't take this issue seriously. And when it comes to due diligence on projects in the city, we're going to exercise that. We're going to make sure that each project is approved and viewed through the California Government Code. We're going to make sure that it is viewed and approved through the Menefee Municipal Code. And we're going to make sure that the applicants who bring forward commercial and residential projects in the city meet all the conditions of approval that have been imposed upon them. That's the due diligence that we are required to do. And we and the county have done that when it comes to the latest agenda item from December 12th, which were final track maps approvals. And there, it's a ministerial action that we did on December 12th. There was a timeline for those that would have cost the applicant some additional monies to re-record those maps. And the applicant met all the conditions of approval, met the government code, met the municipal code, so we moved forward on that in a unanimous way. We have some very good speakers that are going to be coming up in a future workshop for this topic, and this council will be exploring other options, including the ordinance that was mentioned earlier this evening, at least bring it back at some future date and possibly make amendments to it if needed. So, I'll defer the rest of my comments to the city manager's report later on in the agenda for that particular topic. My next comment is, I need to ask the consent of the council for this next one. City Attorney, Councilmember Furman and I serve on a board of directors of a corporation together. For this two-year period, I'm the president. For this two-year period, he's the vice president. This issue was not an issue until I was elected to this council. And so, with the consent of the rest of the council, Councilmember Furman and I need an opinion as to whether or not both of us can continue to serve on the board of directors of the Quail Valley Environmental Coalition as board members. I, my fear is, and I want, I don't want the perception that he and I serving on this corporation board together could be construed as an ad hoc committee of the city. And so, if we could have an opinion of that from you in the future, we would appreciate it, subject to the consent of the rest of the council.
Okay. In, in order to do that, what I, what I would appreciate having from you is a copy of the organizational documents for the nonprofit and their bylaws and so on. Let me take a look at that. There are special rules that apply to nonprofits and to situations where they're funded by or carry out the functions of government. So, I need to know a little bit more about the organization before I can give you an opinion.
Okay. Thank you. I'll be happy to provide those documents.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. It looks like we are on the next agenda item, which is the consent calendar. Madam Clerk, do we have any speak?
Yes, sir.
I'll take the speakers now.
Grant Yoderz? Mr. Yoderz, you would speak to both items at this time.
For the record, Grant Yoderz, Community of Sun City. I come before you once again regarding the warrant register. I first visited this item on September 18th of this past year, and there was a rather long article in the September 21st Californian regarding my presentation. Since then, I have talked to this item several times, and now with a fresh counsel, I will try again. All I'm doing is asking, making a simple request that the total figures be listed on the agenda of the warrant register, so anyone that enters the chamber can pick up a copy and see the dollar amount is being approved. And if they want to challenge, make a challenge, then they can get a register summary, which I also have. And Kathy is so kind to give me one at every meeting, being I don't have a computer. It's so, it's so simple. As a register lists three categories, the voucher list with dates, dollar amounts, the payroll register with dates and dollar amounts, and wire transfers with dates and dollar amounts, and a grand total. And for the benefit of those in the audience tonight, you will, you will be approving $3,662,836.09, of which all are budgetary items. I'm not asking for a complete summary, just the totals. I feel that the citizens are entitled to know the dollar amounts that you are approving. Transparent governance. If there is a question, I have a copy of how it, how it is done in one of the other neighboring cities. Briefly on the, the, I guess it's 10.4, with the, and I request, I question this request because Menefee does not maintain any of the parks in the city as noted on its consent calendar. Valleywide collects the revenue assessment to maintain these parks, and they are at their own district. The City of Menefee has no control or collect any of the funding responsible for the maintenance of this park. And I don't see why the city should have to be saddened with some, saddled with some of the expense of the maintenance. Therefore, I feel that this item should be taken off of the consent calendar and put before the council for discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Yoderz. I believe that we might be able to entertain, at least explore the request of identifying some additional clarity on the total dollar value on the warrant register, but it is already on the agenda. So, I guess we could probably explore carrying that forward at some date and putting it in the staff report or on the agenda itself. I would ask at this point, city manager, could you please address the parks issue real briefly in terms of how it's managed on the west side of I-215, please?
Be happy to. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city's actually cut in half with the I-215. On the east side of the freeway, Valleywide Recreation and Park District manages those facilities on the east side of 215. On the west side of 215, the city owns six parks, Laal Marsh, La Ladera, Lazy Creek, Pete Peterson, Nova Park, and Ranch Ramona Park. And we have a contract that we have the county maintain those parks for us and the facilities and provide recreational program for us on the west side. We do own those. We do collect tax assessments that were formerly CSAs. There are a number of them that the city actually receives money, and we use that money in a contract format to allow the county to provide those services for us. But we do own the parks.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Next speaker, please, on the consent calendar.
I'll try that again. That's all the speakers on the consent calendar.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I would entertain a motion on the consent agenda, please. May I have a second?
Aye.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember August?
Aye.
Councilmember Furman?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Edgerton?
Aye.
Councilmember Denver?
Aye.
Mayor Mann?
Aye.
Thank you.
Next item, agenda is public hearings, and I believe we have none for this evening. So, we go on to discussion items. Madam Clerk, 12.1, could you read this, please?
Yes. Appointments to Planning Commission by council members per municipal code 2.20020 and 2.20030.
Okay. Just as a clarification of this, for my own, as the chair, my understanding of this agenda item is that unless, unless Councilmember Furman and Councilmember Denver are appointing different commissioners, that we're only entertaining appointments from August Mann and Edgerton. Is that correct?
That is correct. The municipal code calls for the appointments after an election year, a municipal election year, and the term of the appointed commissioner runs with the council member who appointed him.
Okay. Thank you. So, I think, I think what we would like, what I would like to do is go alphabetically, starting with Councilmember August and then Edgerton and Mann. If you would announce your planning commissioner, and then I believe we have to take a motion in a second to ratify those selections. No?
No, sir. The code does not require.
All right. Very well. Councilmember August?
I'd like to make a couple of comments before I appoint my planning commissioner. I need to apologize to some of the residents in District 1 and possibly throughout the city. I did get some complaints about a comment of mine in the newspaper, in the Riverside Paper, and I, the title of the article is "The Board Awaits Secret Choice." How many of you read that by any chance in the paper? Okay. Probably all the people that complained, right? Well, actually, actually, I'd like to make a couple of comments about that article. I was called by Mr. Sarowski about two days before Christmas, and he asked me who my planning was, planning commissioner was going to be, and I said that, you know, I'd rather wait until, until the night of the 2nd. And kind of tongue-in-cheek, I said, I think he quoted me in here as saying, "I'd just as soon shock the world at the same time." Okay? So, I'm going to shock the world tonight, okay, just in case you know. But anyway, I, that was a tongue-in-cheek comment, and I have no problem. I made that comment. Mr. Sarowski has every right to put that in the paper. However, I was called by the Californian a week and a half earlier and talked to Mr. Jeff Sanders. He asked me the same question. I said I'd rather wait until the evening of the 2nd. So, I said the same thing. I'll just shock the world the same night. Well, he didn't find there was any value in a comment to print it in. Mr. Sarowski did, and again, he has every right. But I certainly didn't mean to anger any of the constituents with that comment, and I will be more careful in the future with my humor. Okay. Now, about my planning commissioner. What is my criteria? I thought about it for a long time, and I have talked to, it wasn't a hush-hust thing like was reported in the paper. I've talked to pretty much all the council members over the past month. I've talked to several planning commissioners. I've talked to people in and outside the community and people in my community about the choice I'm about to make. My criteria, I want to know the person. I want to know the person that I'm going to appoint. I have worked with the person I'm going to appoint. I believe in the person I'm going to appoint. I trust the person that I'm going to appoint. It needs to be a person I know and that I've worked with, can work with others, has worked with others, who will work hard, be independent, resourceful, and work, work very hard, who's not anti-development but cautious, is cautious against development, who is not afraid to agree with people. She's not only afraid to agree with people, but she can disagree. She can stand alone. She's, she's a very, very strong person. A couple of geographical and personal things that we share together are that she's a senior citizen. She lives above Newport Road. She's a senior citizen. And I think that'll be the first one that lives above Newport. I'm pretty, I'm confident that this decision will work out, and the people in Sun City and the rest of the city will be fairly, fairly, fairly happy with the choice. I'm proud to nominate Ann Pika as my planning commissioner.
Commissioner Pika, stand and be recognized, please. Congratulations. Thank you, Councilmember August. Deputy Mayor Edgerton?
Here we go. Still learning. I'm going to reappoint Chris Thomas. Chris Thomas was my first appointment. There's Chris Thomas, good-looking guy back there. I have a criteria. I want to get somebody basically my own age. And I've known Chris Thomas before I got on the council. I do believe an elected official's personal life is pertinent. And I've got to know Chris and his friends. This guy, if you've been in his home, you see what kind of a husband he is, a loving husband, a faithful husband. You see what kind of a father he is. He gives the right amount of discipline. His kids are super. They're not brats. They're just fantastic kids. They know that they have to have semblance of discipline, and they're very loved. He's, he's a good citizen. He cares about his community. He cares about the rural area. He doesn't like too high of a density, but he's not anti-development. His dad was a contractor. He understands the business. He's He's chaired the planning commission in the past, and he's well thought of by his colleagues. And I'm, I'm very pleased and proud to support a really great guy and a good citizen. Reappoint him, Chris Thomas.
Commissioner, stand up, please, and be recognized. Congratulations. Well done to you, sir. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I announced my planning commissioner on December 4th, and Lisa Sobek, would you please stand? Commissioner Sobek, thank you very much for standing up and serving the community again. My criteria was honesty, trustworthy, loyalty, and ethics. Beyond that, she can review anything. She needs to come to independent judgments, and that's why I selected her for those character traits. So thank you, Commissioner Sobek, and congratulations. Moving on, what's our next agenda item? Madam Clerk.
All right, sir, that's consider modifications. The city council, policy number one for rules of decorum and procedures for council.
All right, thank you very much. Now, recall, council, that this was one of my top 10 agenda items for us to review it as a new council. Did anybody have any recommended changes to the decorum policy that they would like to have staff bring back at a future meeting for us to ratify? Councilmember August.
I believe I, did I not submit this to city today, to Ms. Bennett? Or do you want me to go over that right now?
Please, articulate your recommended change.
Yeah, I'll articulate. With the decorum policy, I, I looked through it, and there was one stuck out, one that stuck out at me that I think we might need to address, and I hope the council will support me in this sentence, basically, on page 10-2, and it has to do with the placement of items on the city council meeting agenda. And it reads, "The city manager, in conjunction with staff recommendations, will schedule agenda events." I would like to add, I would like to add the following to the end of that sentence, and it reads, I won't read that one again, but it says, "After approval of the mayor, or in his absence, the deputy mayor, and in cases where both are absent, other council members." And so what I'm basically saying is, before agenda items go out, the mayor will have to approve that, and they will have to look for him, instead of probably what happened in the past, is he had to look for the staff. So that's my recommendation.
All right, thank you very much. I understand the scope of your change. I understand, if I could summarize, is that you would like to see the mayor, the city manager, and the clerk, and the city attorney, if necessary, hold an agenda meeting before the agenda gets posted and submitted out to the public, or at least as a review item, is what I hear you say. Am I incorrect?
That would be, that would be, that would be nice. I'm not sure if that's a fact.
See what I said. What I'm saying specifically is, before the agenda goes into print, as in accepted by the staff and the city manager, I want you to approve it.
Okay, I understand. Okay, I think I can live with that myself. And are there any additional comments from the council about this? Councilmember Denver, Councilmember Furman?
No, not about that one. I'm happy with that one.
Okay, do you have additional?
Well, we had, we had, we had one agenda item here that we have, that there were suggestions made before, and I think we basically have to select one of these out of the three. There was three suggestions made. One is that any council member can put something on the agenda. The second one was, the, a councilman and a co-sponsor would put something on the agenda. And the other one, which I'm not in favor, is that the majority must approve something that put it on the agenda. So I would say we either decide on number one or number two, which is, one councilman can return something, or the second choice would be, a councilman and a co-sponsor from the council would have to bring something back on the agenda.
Okay, I under-
It's open for discussion.
I understand your points. Before we, before we go further, I want to make sure, city manager or clerk, do, do you have Councilmember August's input for a future change? Do you need any additional information from us or him?
I certainly feel comfortable with it. Are you?
I think, I think we're okay with it.
Okay.
The one thing I would say, if you're going to move on to members from the council adding to the agenda or putting things on the agenda, I would recommend that it be the mayor or one or two. In other words, the mayor should have the option, too, as opposed to just a council member.
Well, thank you. That's the way it was previously, if I, if I recall. So when we bring this back for ratification, go ahead and add that in, if you would, please. And then, city manager, I see that you have your button pushed, but I want a clarification real quickly, if I may, with respect to Councilmember Furman's concerns or points on staff report, page 2, other agenda items, sub-paragraphs 1, 2, and 3. How do we do it now? My understanding is that we, we are doing agenda, we are doing number one, which is, any council member may request to have returned on next possible agenda. That's how we're conducting business now.
That is correct, with other items that need to move through the process for city council approval if it's a policy decision.
Okay. So I think that we, in the absence of, I don't know if we need, really need to change the decorum policy to reflect that, since that's how we're doing business at this juncture, but I would agree with, well, for one person's perspective, I would agree with you, Councilmember Furman, that number three, we don't need to do.
Right.
Okay? Let me go ahead and hear from the city manager first, Councilmember Denver, because he had his button pushed first.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to make sure that council realized these are not recommendations from staff. These are just compilations of what had occurred over the past year that needed to come back for a decision. That's it.
Okay, thank you very much for that clarification. Councilmember Denver.
I would recommend that we have, it takes two people to get something on the agenda, whether it be the mayor or be a councilperson. There has to be two, a councilperson and the mayor, or two councilpeople to get it on the agenda. We spend, we give an inordinate amount of work to our staff, and it would be better if we could limit the amount of work that the staff would get, and at least have two votes for something before they go to a whole bunch of work.
Thank you, Councilmember Denver. Deputy Mayor Edgerton.
Well, I'm, I'm happy with the way we're doing it now, but I think Councilmember Denver makes a good point, and I would add to, to what he's saying, is that sometimes you really don't have a chance to think something through, and it seems like a great idea, and you put that on the agenda, and you might end up looking kind of stupid. And it's probably good to bounce it off of a colleague, as long as you don't bounce it off too, right, Julie? But bounce it off a colleague and get, get the support of another colleague. I think there's a greater probability than that it's well thought out before you come to the floor, and it also keeps you from being stampeded by, by some people who may be very concerned about something when you don't have all the information to respond properly. So I, I could stay with where we are, or I could certainly support Mr. Denver's, Councilman Denver's recommendation.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Edgerton. Councilmember August.
I favor two.
Okay. All right, so it, what I hear is consensus on the council. Staff, what do you need from us, then? I hear two changes to the decorum policy, which is the additions that Councilmember August wanted in his original discussion, and then what I hear is the council desiring what Councilmember Furman initially suggested, which was, on page 2 of the staff report, under other agenda items, both sub-paragraphs 1 and 2 would go into the decorum policy.
True. No, just two.
Just two?
That's what John made a motion.
All right, let's clarify. Let me clarify. What is it that, of those three items?
Two. It's number two, but, just to be clear, I don't have it here in front of me. To be, to be absolutely clear, what I'm saying is, is to put an item on the agenda, the mayor and a councilperson or two councilpeople have to both agree to put it on the agenda. Simple as that.
Okay. What, do you need any other consensus other than that, staff, in order to bring this back for ratification, or can we decide upon these two changes from the dais this evening?
I think it would be better if you brought it back with a formal resolution, because this is a, this is the bylaws.
Yep, all right.
Basically, and it would be appropriate to, to do that, to bring it back in cleaned-up fashion, so that we can do that.
Okay, very well. Thank you very much for that advice. Council, are there any more discussions with respect to changes to the decorum policy? Deputy Mayor Edgerton.
Excuse me, does this, will this wrap it up? If we agree to this, then the whole council agrees on the decorum policy?
It'll be brought back for us to vote on.
Okay.
The two items that we discussed.
There's no, there's no disagreement tonight among anybody, because that's, that's news. I mean, when we were not agreeing, when we were not agreeing, it hit the AP. It went all the way to the east coast. So this is twice in a row this council has agreed on decorum policy. That's news.
Consensus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Here, you betcha. Councilmember Denver?
The only thing I wanted to say was, is it's the mayor, have we thought this thing through about the mayor's approval on the agenda? I have no problem with that. I pushed very hard when, when I was the mayor to have a meeting before each meeting to look over the agenda. I never required, requested nor required that I approve everything, because so much of it, as you all know, comes up from the staff, and then to the, to the city manager, and he puts it on, and they work on that up until just hours before the agenda's finally put out. It may put, I, I think we're stepping, I mean, I lean it up to you, but we're stepping a little bit further than what has been thought through. You may, we may be slowing the process down a lot, because you have to have a meeting within hours of a certain date. They're changing the agenda all the way along until, I think it's, what, Thursday or Friday before the meeting? And I would rather see, right now, it be thought through, let's, let's all sit down, we have a new city manager someday coming in, we, let's, 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 let's talk about this, so that one a little bit, and change that to have a meeting with the city mayor, with the mayor before the agenda's put together. He's in on it. But I don't know about approval, because there may be, what happens when something happens that's a law that happens five minutes after your meeting? I just don't think we've thought this through. I'm talking about procedurally more than reality.
Yeah. Great points. Councilmember August.
The reason, you can err on either side. You can have too much over here, too much over here. The reason that I favor approval from the mayor is that I don't want to have something put on the agenda at the last minute. I want the mayor to look out for us and say, "Look, you got to give my council time to put this on and review it." I don't like coming up here with things coming up at the last minute, even though sometimes they do have, and I can understand that. But why, why set yourself a policy where it can happen all the time and not just infrequently? So I would, I will go along with what the council says, but I, that's, I'm going to stand with that. I would like to have the mayor's approval, or in his absence or whatever. That's my feeling, but I totally respect your opinion on that, but I'm, I'm, I'm pretty, I'm pretty convinced that I don't want, I want, I don't want the worst-case scenario to happen. I want to protect the council, and that's, that's my, that's my avian feeling, the way I do. Thank you.
Councilmember Denver?
Could we get the city manager to speak for just a second about the issue that I was speaking to and the timing of things? The legal responsibilities when something finally comes through, and it has to be done by this date or that date, and the calling of media, could, could we ask your opinion, sir?
Definitely, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, I think it would be appropriate that if that happens, I, as the city manager, contact the mayor, so that there are no issues prior to us putting through the agenda.
No problems, then?
Don't see any.
Very good. I'm happy, then.
Deputy Mayor Edgerton.
Well, as I understand it, this is all coming back to the council, so we've, we've got some opportunity to give this some thought between now and the next meeting, and so that we can determine whether what Councilman August is saying in reference to the mayor is the best way to go, or it would encumber us, as Councilman Denver points out, and I think making a snap decision right now is probably what none of us want to do. We'd probably like to, you know, chew on this a little bit, and we'd probably come back with a 5-0 vote.
Mayor Mann, we can also give you choices.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that, no.
At the next meeting.
Speak.
We, we can also give you choices.
For the next meeting?
For the next meeting. We can bring alternatives back.
What I have, what I, what I think I have the sense of the council is, is that they would like to have Councilmember August's input brought back on the decorum policy. We want Councilmember Furman and Edgerton, Denver and Deputy Mayor Edgerton's sub-paragraph 2 on the decorum policy, and it seems to be a consensus to make those changes. So if you would, please, staff, bring that back at a future meeting for us to ratify that change. Okay. Thank you very much, council. Well done. Appreciate your input and, and your consensus on that. Thank you. Previously, I had modified the agenda to hear agenda item 12.4 first, and I'm going to do that at this point now, Madam Speaker. 12.4, do we have any speakers?
No, sir.
Do we have a staff report?
Yes, sir.
I'll hear the staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, Terry Willoughby, our finance director, will be providing a brief staff report on this, and will be happy to answer any questions after.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm here tonight speaking on the cooperative agreement with the county of Riverside for the Leon Road safety improvements. The city of Minifee and the county of Riverside have been working together on funding improvements that will provide a solution to dangerous conditions which currently exist on Leon Road, which is located both within the boundaries of the city as well as the county. The desired improvements will improve traffic safety by improving site distance through reconstructing the vertical profile of the street, which will make the road more even. It's currently very uneven, and it's difficult to see, as it has a lot of dips in it. It will also provide four-foot paved shoulders on the road. The county will be designated as a lead agency due to the, on this project, due to their expertise in roadway safety projects. The total project cost is $1.1 million, $550,000, but the county has secured grant funding to cover the bulk of the project cost, about $900,000. The bulk of the, the balance of that project will be split between the county and the city, with the city's financial responsibility being $325,000, which the county has agreed to take in installment payments, as shown below, with only $100,000 due this fiscal year, and the remainder of the payments will be included in future budget years. And that concludes my report this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Willoughby. Are there any questions from council? No questions from council? All very well, I'll entertain a motion on item 12.4. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Edgerton. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, and this is because we're expending funds within the fiscal year. It's a supplemental appropriation. We need a roll call vote.
Thank you, your honor. Councilmember August.
Aye.
Councilmember Furman.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Edgerton.
Aye.
Councilmember Denver.
Aye.
Mayor Mann.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next on the agenda, please, is 12.3.
Yes, sir.
Do we have any, well, I, I think what we need to do first is, 12.3 is approve agreement with the city of Lake Elsinore regarding the paving of Holland Road. Does Councilmember Furman need to recuse himself from this agenda item?
Yes.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Furman, if you would, please. For those members of the public, the reason why Councilmember Furman must recuse himself is that he owns a portion of the Holland Road, has a private road that is scheduled to be paved, so he cannot vote on this item. We'll take speakers, Madam Clerk, if we have any.
No, sir.
And staff reports, please. Oh, wait, we have one speaker waving in the audience.
Wow, two times I have to ask for forgiveness tonight.
Ah, that's okay.
Mr. Matalco.
Sorry for being so rude and waving. Yeah, I, I saw an article in the paper that has to pertain with the paving of Holland Road. I'm in favor of having the road paved. The only problem I have with it, it says the city's going to be paying for a portion of it, where I believe, reading through part of the agreement with the Audie Murphy project, it states in there that one of the conditions that they agreed to was they were going it states in there that one of the conditions that they agreed to was they were going to pave that portion, and not on a temporary basis, the way I think that we're gonna do it now, but on a permanent, like the rest of it has been done. So I'm hoping that I could get an answer or have staff look into that.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Matalco.
Thank you.
Would it be appropriate, okay, can staff address that, or can the applicant address that, since they're in the audience this evening?
Staff's in the, who's in the staff report?
Very well, I'll take the staff report now then, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is before you, is an agreement with the city of Lake Elsinore and the city of Menifee for Holland Road improvements. Back on May 1st, 2012, staff identified several issues with improvements needed for Holland Road, most notably the issue of a sitting council member owning land adjacent to the dirt road segment and a developer wants condition to improve the roadway. The city council directed staff to find a solution to the problem and to correct the safety issue that was out there. Because a segment of the dirt road is in the city of Elsinore, the city of Lake Elsinore and the city of Menifee have agreed to share the burden to protect the public safety by agreeing to make interim improvements within the current road base to Holland Road. Within the city of Lake Elsinore, or the city of Lake Elsinore will be working as the lead agency, this is an interim solution to correct the safety issues and not an ultimate solution to the roadway. That means no improvements to the right-of-way will be made, no curb and gutter, no sidewalk work will be performed. This was, and has been, a very difficult issue to work through. There are areas of the law that prohibit us from acquiring right-of-way from a sitting council member. Staff has worked diligently with the city attorney and the former city attorney to come up with a compromise solution to, to make an interim fix as quickly as possible. As I'm sure you're all aware, it's been played out in the newspaper, that it, it's really been on the city's back to fix this issue, when there are several different ways that this could go. Initially, it was, thought this was a private road, then there was a prescriptive right issue, the people have been traveling this road for over 50 years, the county had been blading the road, the city took over the blading of that road at incorporation, so there's been a number of issues with this road section. Ultimately, on May 1st, 2012, council directed staff to fix it, to solve the issue, and we've done that. There will be a cost to the city for the improvement, again, they're interim improvements, it's not ultimate road width. It is being split 50/50 with the city of Lake Elsinore. The funding is available in the city's deposit trust fund for developer-endlu Street improvements, and should the city council approve this agreement tonight, work would begin next week and be completed prior to the school start on January 14th. That concludes the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Questions from the council? Councilmember August, you were, you were trying, buzzing in.
Anyway, did you address Mr. Matalco's question, or I'm, I'm not sure?
I indirectly addressed it by acknowledging that this is an interim solution and not a full-width fix, which is what the developer was required to do.
Thank you. Councilmember Denver?
No, so.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. This, first of all, let me just say that this is a fantastic solution, very creative. So compliments to staff, past and present, as well as council members, past and present, because this has been a, a thorn, if you would, in the side of travelers to get their children to school in that new school, elementary school in Lake Elsinore, and I know that, you know, had we had the ability to do things all over again, we probably would have worked to have this done in advance of that school being constructed, but things being as they are, congratulations for such a creative solution from everybody, well done to you all. With respect to the road, are we going, I realize that this is an interim solution, are we going to impose any truck weight limits on this portion of Holland Road between Myrietta and the city of Lake Elsinore?
That's a very good question, we haven't even approached that yet with the agreement that we have, but we'll definitely look at that through engineering. As you know, we have interim city engineer Habib Moulla, who's very versed in county road improvements and several different municipality improvements, who's gonna be assisting the city of Lake Elsinore with, through the process, but you bring a very good point that we need to definitely look at that.
I would, I would ask that you explore and to bring back, if we need to make a decision for ourselves or at the policy level, but if it's within your power to do, perhaps we should only allow school buses and normal vehicle traffic and keep semi-trailer traffic off of there, would be a request. And then my other question is, since we've done, since we've done this agreement with Elsinore and as we go to pave this, have we notified ParsAC that we have another new road and that we have perhaps taken on some liability in that regard?
We would do that once the project is completed.
Alright, thank you very much. Deputy Mayor Edgerton?
Yeah, I just want to thank the mayor for bringing that point up about the loading on that road. I hadn't, it hadn't even occurred to me, I hadn't thought about that, but it does remind me, Mr. Mayor, of when you were on the council, as I recall, and we had an issue, I believe it was with Myrietta or Lake Elsinore?
Little more.
Where there was gonna be heavy truck traffic on Bundy, and that load factor was gonna affect how well the road would stand up, et cetera, it was gonna affect our budget. So I'd really emphasize what you brought up, that, that's an excellent point.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Madam Attorney?
Yes, I just wanted to clarify, in the course of going through this, we, as has been indicated by Mr. Johnson, it's a rather murky and, to highlight it, muddy kind of legal thing to deal with, but the proposed agreement is being proposed as a, an implementation of the conditions of approval, which were conditions of approval on a subdivision. And as a result, one of the issues that arose just today, quite frankly, was the question of whether there might be an issue with government code 1090. And for the record, I wanted to clarify that even though this does affect Councilmember Furman's property and otherwise could have posed a problem for the council moving forward, because it is associated with the subdivision process, there's a specific exemption for that, it's 1091.1. And so under that exemption, Mr. Furman has recused himself as he's required to do, but the council is authorized to move forward on this. So I just wanted to make sure that's part of the record. The other thing is that you've also been presented with a secondary agreement, which is an indemnification of the developer as to the title issues with regard to the prescriptive easement that was previously identified by City Attorney Foster, excuse me, Fletcher. And, and that's been agreed to by both, will be agreed to by both Lake Elsinore and the city, to assure that if there is a problem with the prescriptive easement, that we are moving forward on, that that's handled, so, so that it will, the liability to the extent that there is any, will follow the city.
Thank you very much, Madam Attorney, for getting that on the record. I think that was important for us to hear, as well as the public, so thank you very much for that. Before I take a motion on this item, I just want to thank, and I'm sure that you would agree with me, I'd like to thank Councilmember Furman for his leadership on getting this road paved. It's been a project that's been at the forefront of his mind for many, many years, and he deserves a great deal of credit for having this resolved to the point where it is, so thank you, Tom, for that, and with that, I'll entertain a motion on 12.3.
Show move.
May I have a second?
Second.
Do we need a roll call on this?
Yes, sir, please.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember August?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Edgerton?
Aye.
Councilmember Denver?
Aye.
Mayor, man?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I believe that completes the balance of our agenda, and that brings us to city manager reports. Before we, Mr. Manager, Councilmember Furman, if you would please join us, rejoin us in the chamber, thank you.
Did it pass?
It passed.
You get to pay for it some.
You. Congratulations. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, members of the council. I have several items for tonight. We've been working in Quail Valley on a number of projects, another one's been completed. This is the Quail Valley Pathway Project. On the left side of your screen, you can see that before there were no rails, no defined pathway, no pedestrian protection from the roadway. This is a walkthrough path from Quail Valley proper, or the center of Quail Valley, down to Quail Valley Elementary School. It's on the west side of Getz Road, that you're looking south to north, or from south to north. On the right side of the screen, you can see that new rails have been installed, there's defined and compacted pathway, pedestrian is now protected from the roadway. We also added a, a wall section so that underneath that tree that you see there, where there's some condensation and a rather interesting pipe that runs under the road, won't erode that part of the walkway. In another area just north of that tree, there's a concrete spillway where a water typically crosses the path. What we, what we did is made a change on the fly with the contractor who held their price for us, didn't charge us for the extra concrete, and that concrete spillway allows the water to sheet across that pathway without disrupting the DG pathway, so that one's been completed.
Thank you. Before you go on, Councilmember Denver, you had a question or a point?
I, a question. I noticed the material that we're using, it's, appears to be, and I believe to be, the same material we used in Sun City near the library, the gravel granite looking?
Decomposed granite, correct.
That is decomposed granite?
Yes, sir.
And why do we use that instead of asphalt? Is it a, what's the reasons? I mean, it's alright with me, it's?
It's cheaper, softer, easier to put into form, don't need much of a curb and gutter on the side to keep it in place, and there's just a rail that's tamped, but all that is brought in and tamped down.
And it lasts as long as asphalt?
Absolutely.
Excuse me.
Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, I think another, when you use asphalt in walkways and you got kids walking on it, you end up with a summer like we just had. The asphalt literally can melt on you, and the kids are walking around with the asphalt stuck on their shoes, or whomever walks down there, if I'm not mistaken, unless they've come up with a better grade of asphalt than I'm aware of.
This won't crack, this won't peel, this won't alligator, this won't pull up. If there's an issue, it's a shovel in place with, with a automatic tamper to put it back down and compact it.
Thank you. Next item there, Mr. Manager?
This is the left turn pocket, Antelope northbound to north Newport westbound. This is actually looking from Newport south, so that you can see that the turn pocket there's been elongated, this is gonna relieve a lot of the traffic traveling north on Antelope to Newport, allowing more stacking in the double turn that's going on to westbound Newport. We're hoping to alleviate the drive-through U-turn in front of the, the development north of Newport and alleviating a lot of the through traffic and right turn traffic that's been blocked when it doesn't stack. Weather permitting, the project should be completed in about two weeks. Hopefully by next week, it will be done, and that will be another project for our interim traffic fixes that we've been working on. This is a project that we are having a solution for, and in fact, that yellow line there should actually be on the south side of the street. This is McCall and Sherman, you can see Hans Christiansen Middle School in your top-left corner. This is actually an issue that's been working through our traffic division and public works for several months. It was brought to us by several, several residents and the crossing guard at that location, which is at Sherman and McCall. What's happening is the kids are walking south on Sherman toward McCall, which is a very busy street, they're crossing both sides of the streets, they're going east across Sherman and then south across McCall. Unfortunately, there's no curb and gutter or sidewalk on the south side of the street to get the, the kids to the proper, to their homes. And so we're looking at a, at a solution there to, unfortunately, there's a very large V-ditch on the south side of the street as well. We're looking at using some community improvement funds that we currently have in the budget to address that and put a pathway in there so that they can get safely to and from school.
Question, Mr. Manager, if you could flip back. Okay, I see the yellow portion, that's where the pathway would go.
Actually, it's on, it should be on the south side of Newport.
It should be on the south side of McCall?
Yes, sir.
What about, if you could talk briefly about the, is there enough, is there a sidewalk or a path, whether it's DG or regular dirt, along Sherman Road heading into the middle school? Is there enough, is there room for walkway there? Or why would we not want to also do a walkway there if it's not?
Very good point, there's a, there's a, a little bit of a dirt path there where kids can walk, it's not as traveled highly as McCall. They are at, going between two intersections that have crossing guards, it's a little, it's a little more calm, a little bit more friendly in that area. It's really when they get to the McCall area that we're having the issues, and unfortunately, if they go to the south side of the street, what's happening is the kids are walking in the street and taking up the first travel lane, and cars are swerving around them. So it's more of a hazardous issue for us to handle the McCall side, but, you know, we can take a look at the, at the Sherman side as well.
Alright, thank you.
I'd, I'd like to second the opinion on that, that is a, the, it's, I agree with everything you guys have said, the south side of McCall's more important, but we ought to at least look at and plan the rest of, as was explained by the mayor.
Thank you, sir, we'll, we'll make that notification. This is Newport Bridge hatched lane traveling east, there's been a, several questions from the public since we've made the improvements on moving west on Newport. This is between the off, the southbound off-ramp of I-215 at Newport and Han Road would be on the left side of your screen, where we made the double left turn lane extension. Well, traveling east, when people are coming home, the, the issue of the through lane traffic going east across the bridge is that there's a hatched lane there, and the hatched lane was installed by the county several years ago when the improvement, interim improvements were done on the interchange. And what, what they've, what Caltrans has been informing us is, prior to this, and we've asked and we actually have a permit now to fix this, is that that hatched lane was there to protect travelers from entering the southbound off-ramp. We've seen a number of other municipalities take that hatch lane out and actually create a stacking lane that would go across the bridge and directly on northbound 215, and our traffic engineer, Bernie Dennis, has a permit request to Caltrans now to remove that, a portion of that hatch lane to, to install a lane dedicated to northbound traffic. It would alleviate through traffic issues for motorists traveling eastbound of Newport over the interchange. We should have notification on that in about two weeks, whether we're able to do that. It's a simple fix, it's going and, and covering over that hatch lane and making, making a pocket to stack to go straight across the bridge into the left turn lane, and so you'd have two lanes going across Newport eastbound.
Councilmember Denver?
Congratulations to get to this, this has been one of the, the simplest fixes. When you drive out there on this, it, you just, you know, a guy with a, with a black, with a bucket of paint could fix it. And, and this is really well, well thought through. Some, several people have been talking about this for some time, I'm really pleased that we're getting this done.
Thank you, thank you, sir. Staff is making definite inroads and relationships with Caltrans, where we haven't had those relationships before, and it's obviously improving with what we're being allowed to do on these interim improvements, so it's been good.
Excellent.
Finally, as mentioned earlier, at the May 1st, 2012 council meeting, a request was made for a workshop on biosolids in relation to usage on vacant former agricultural property. Staff had presented a development application process to improve where we were with regard to regulations on testing of vacant property known to be former agricultural land, making a nexus between Phase 2 testing, which would actually do the coring, and simply preparing a Phase 1. The workshop would allow staff to provide information to the council on the process for approving the projects through the environmental regulations and the requirements for testing property prior to approvals, that was made back in May of 2012. We've had a little bit of change on the council, it'd be nice to, to provide that update. It would also be to provide information relative to the city's updated requirements for the development projects, and to invite Riverside County Environmental Health Department staff to discuss past and present regulations involving land application contents of biosolids in Menifee. We'd actually need some time, obviously, to prepare for this workshop, and we would ask that it would be scheduled prior to a regularly scheduled council meeting, so that the public would be aware that, that of the meeting dates and times, we're requesting either February 19th or March 5th, and I'm requesting direction tonight from city council to provide that workshop, to update the council on the topic.
Councilmember August?
I don't know if I should go here or not, but anyway, as we all know, that there's a strong opposition group out here to sledge testing, and I'm a strong opposition group out here to sludge testing, and I'm one who feels that a lot of times that, that some of the things they ask and some of the things they brief forward, they don't have an awful lot of documentation for. So I'm wondering, and I want to give them every benefit of the doubt at this workshop, to put everything they have forward to it, so these public health officials can come out and either say yea or nay. Sooner or later, we've got to get to the bottom of this, is who's right, what's accepted, what's not, what's dangerous and what's not. So I am, I want the other, I want the people that are concerned with the sludge, and I don't know if they'll be given formal preparation or anything like that, but is it possible for you to maybe take a representative from them and have some questions from them we may be able to address?
With the workshop, there's opportunity for public comment, and so that would be available at this workshop.
If somebody, for instance, presented you a list of questions and they submitted it to you, would you take that into consideration? For the experts, for the experts to answer?
We, we could definitely take that into consideration, but they're more than welcome to come to the workshop, which is what we'd like them to do-
I understand.
-and ask those questions as well.
But it's, but it's okay if we, you don't have to, but it's okay if we try it.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
We would, we would submit those to the officials and allow them to comment.
Absolutely, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Edgerton?
I want to strongly second what the councilman was just describing for that, for that public meeting, councilman August. I call that last meeting on sludge and got, and recommendation from staff, I thank staff for having been involved in that, but at least a couple of, who I thought were the leaders of the most concerned about sludge, didn't even come to that meeting. Now, I don't know if they weren't aware of it, I thought they were aware of it, et cetera. So if we can, we need a responsible council, mayor council and a responsible staff to address this issue in a very transparent and responsible way. But those who are concerned about it also have to be responsible enough to come to the meeting, present their concerns in some definitive way so that we can understand each other and not continue to chip away at this and then therefore blindside the council at some later date and re-ask another question that has already been asked, et cetera, et cetera. I, I know what the mayor is trying to do, and I applaud him for it. He's trying to put this thing to bed, once and for all, so, and I think that's, correct me if I'm wrong, councilman August, but I think that's your concern, is that we want interaction from the people who are concerned the most about sludge, let's get it done, but you've got to participate and be as responsible as you want us to be.
Thank you, Mr. Edgerton. I'll take councilmember Furman and then councilmember Denver.
I would, I would only suggest that you give it at least three or four hours, you know, if you start this at four o'clock, I think, or three o'clock in the afternoon, I think there's, could be a lot of input. If we start it at least at four o'clock, give it three hours at least. That's all.
Thank you, councilmember Furman. Councilmember Denver?
I'd like to, third, councilman August's ideas, I also would like to put this to rest, and I think it's time, but I would go further, I would, although I think this is what you meant, let, supposedly there's pictures out there of trucks taking sludge from the lake to, and putting it underneath where those houses are. Supposedly, there's documented comments made from people who lived in Canyon Lake. Supposedly, there's, well, there's all kinds of, of things, and yet there is no, no one's ever seen those pictures, no one's ever, no one knows those names, those people have never come forward and spoken. Let's do it once and for all. It's, it's, it's like in a marriage when they stand up and say, if anybody has any problems with this marriage, speak now or forever hold your peace. And so let's get it all up, let's get it done.
Thank you, councilmember Denver. I think, Mr. Manager, do you need anything else from us to proceed with this?
I would just like consideration on the date.
Well, I would, I would defer to your judgment on the date, based upon how you put this workshop together, the number of speakers, the number of inputs you get, I think the council will completely defer to your judgment on which day to choose.
Thank you, sir. Well, I have an update on the 22nd.
All right, very well. Are there any other city manager updates?
No, sir, that's all.
All right, very well. Councilmember, future agenda requests. Councilmember Furman?
In a, in a, in a conversation I've had with, actually, it would be Dennis German, or Dennis Chapman's attorney, that he is, he feels he's fighting a one-way battle to get this regional trail north and south connecting the two parts of Menifee. And I would like a letter of support, supporting him in his position to get the trail across the lowlands of the Audie Murphy Valley. I'd like to bring that up for discussion. He's fighting a one-way battle without any written support from the city of Menifee. Now, we either support him or we don't, so I'd like a discussion.
If I may briefly, city attorney, I think what we're going to have to do in order, before we do that, we need to probably hear from you in closed session on this matter, because it involves another governmental entity, sovereign governmental entity, and I think that we need to hear from you in a closed session with respect to this agreement, and then decide from there whether or not we, I think it's a good idea ultimately, if that's what the direction of the council, but I think we need to hear from you on that before we proceed.
I think, I appreciate that, and I think that'd be appropriate. I also want to call to your attention that there has been this recurring question with regard to the extent of whatever the conflict is that Mr. Furman may have with regard to the Audie Murphy Ranch project itself, and I would like direction from the council. I know that Mr. Furman has asked for it, and I think it'd be appropriate to do a request to the FPBC to clarify that, because there is-
On the bifurcation?
On the bifurcation issue.
That would be great.
I know, you, you would ask for it.
Yeah, if you could draft to get a final-
Great. I will be glad to do that.
Dissect it a little more.
That's a separate issue, but I-
I know it was covered lightly, but let's dissect it to see.
Yeah.
Before we, before we expend the funds, do we have consensus from the council to do that?
How many, what's the funds you're talking about?
It would be just the, the city attorney's time to prepare that. All right, that's, that's two people, so make it so.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, councilmember Furman. Councilmembers, any other future agenda items? Councilmember Denver?
Fred Twymann, our past city councilperson, spent a lot of time on the trails. Could we ever consider, could we bring back the idea of naming all or part of the trail system in his name? I think that would be an honorable thing to do to, for him.
Let me, let me just address that, just for maybe your edification. The Trails Commissioner, Marty Rosen, and I, and people from Lake Elsinore have come to kind of an agreement that we want to connect a trail from Paloma High School to the school in, in Canyon Hills, and it's my wish that that trail be called the Twymann Trail. Okay, that, that was kind of an idea I had a year or so ago. Marty's put it together with some other staff, we got, Lake Elsinore is kind of on board, they're excited about it. They're willing to take the trail right up to the end of Craig, through the mountains to connect it to the school. So we just have to pick it up from Craig and bring it to Paloma Valley, which is hardly anything.
All right, let me jump in here, this is not on the agenda, so we can't discuss it any further. I think both of your comments are very appropriate, and I think, Mr. Manager, if you would, I think punt it to our Trails Committee first, and then as you bring back to the council, per the council's previous direction, on the possibility of establishing a Parks and Recs Commission, in whatever method you feel it's most appropriate, to bring that idea back to us at the earliest opportunity that it makes sense. Okay, thank you.
Be happy.
Councilmembers, any other agenda items? Going once, going twice? All right, very well. We are going to adjourn to the next regularly scheduled meeting on Tuesday, January 22nd, not January 15th, and I'm going to adjourn this meeting this evening in honor and in memory of Mr. Tom Carpenter, one of the founding members of our, the Sun City Rotary, as well as a longstanding member of the Chamber of Commerce, and this meeting is adjourned to the 22nd.